Thank you everyone for coming to the meeting tonight. It appears as though we have a big power outage going on all around town and down 103 in that area. So, just to give you a heads up. Is there any agenda additions or deletions?
I have a small item on the transfer station. Shouldn't take more than a couple of minutes.
Okay, George, what do you want to put that under?
We can leave it after, you know, old business or something, I guess.
I'll make that a motion that we go ahead and add George's request to old business.
So moved, they're seconded?
Any second?
Cash did.
Oh, okay, I didn't, I was reading something. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Chester's. All right, I'd ask for approval of the
So moved.
Minutes, March 24th.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion around those minutes?
I wasn't present.
And, any other discussion? Are you hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, highway.
Just a little update, we are in the process right now of improving the truck base with three trucks back into the three base. Actually, we're gonna, we're putting a floor, cement floor in there to help eliminate corrosion and rust and stuff like that on the trucks when they sit on the dirt floors. Actually tomorrow morning, we're gonna pour the first bay, about ten and a half yards. It's all steel grated, rebarred and everything, ready to go, on that part.
Access permit?
Oh, on the access permit was from Mark Davis on Knights Road. He's eventually gonna build the house. And I went up, looked at it, so I visited with him. There's no call, cove required in that area. He's good to go on that, that's my opinion on that part, if the chair would sign off on it, or myself.
I'll make the, a motion that we authorize the chair to sign off on the permit.
Second. Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Jimmy Austin?
Well, hang on a minute, Mr. Chair, if you would.
Tight.
I wanted to ask Cash a question, because I understand that you went to do some, learn something about the process for using brine? Or to get further your education on it, what was that, how did it go?
We actually, I got ahold of Kent Valen and his son Justin. Gave us a tour of their brine facility, and man, did we learn a lot. There is, there's a lot more to it than just adding salt to water and getting the right mixture. With that being said, also, did not know this, but there's actually another product that you actually add to it to make it solidify in the mix. And that's, he said about fifteen gallons per load, roughly, they carry like four hundred and fifty gallons in their trucks.
So it's another chemical that goes in?
Another chemical, yeah, to help activate it and stuff. And, um, because they're doing like the hospital with the helicopter pad and all that, where they can't use any granular stuff. And also like GE, another business town, it's quite in depth of the process. And actually, all four of us as road crew went up there. And what we realize is, we don't have the facility here to have the big tanks for storage and stuff like that, or a place to put them. And it's gotta be somewhat warm, I'm not saying seventy degrees, but at least out of the weather. And minimum like fifty degree working temperature and stuff like that. It's, I haven't priced everything out yet, but I can get some figures together.
So there's quite a bit of equipment where the process should be used?
Yep, there's quite a bit of equipment there to actually do it. And what they have is a machine, a box, that is all computerized like, they're actually, almost like making syrup. And it goes, once it hits that twenty-three point three percent, it's transferred to a tank separate on that part. There's a lot to it, I was quite surprised.
So how much work would it be to get together a list of what we need and how much it costs?
It's gonna take a little bit of time, and to get the right equipment for applying it properly.
And our new truck is such that we could utilize that with the equipment?
That new truck we're looking at, we extended the frame, putting the frame, putting a tank behind the cab. And with that, and I really, I don't agree with this, what that does is it sprays the salt as it's been being put on the road. And there's a lot of pros and cons on that. So when you put salt down, if you have moisture, it's gonna make its own brine.
Oh, I see, so that doesn't, you don't have the mixture, mixed stuff on the, on the tank, is what you're saying?
Well, they're, that twenty-three point three percent, if we had it, the product, you know, you could spray it. But what we're, I think the best benefit is do a pre-treat before a storm on the whole road. And that's what we tried, but couldn't get the right mixture and stuff. And the other thing is, we got set up on that trailer with two thousand gallon tank. And what we found is, we can't do the shore aprons off the side of the road. And also, you're pulling a tanker trailer behind the truck, dump truck and stuff like that, and getting turned around and stuff like that. It's, it's quite in depth.
So what would be the best way of transporting it or getting it to where it needs to go?
Actually, if we really go this route, is to have a truck, even a five fifty or something, set up with a four hundred and fifty gallon tank with the spray bars on it. And that truck be dedicated for just the pre-treats. And you could use that truck for, you know, pull a tank out after off-season, something like that. The thing is, we got a five fifty, but also, that five fifty is set up that if we had a tank in there, that means taking that tank out. It is more, you know, a lot to it time-wise, put tailgate up for that truck to go do the little roads, our dead ends and stuff like that, like we have been
You're talking the one time?
Yes. And this, the other thing is, I've talked with Mark up Hyde Park, there's a lady, I mentioned this before, I think her name is Krista from UVM. Is on this about gathering research and taking it to the legislature. And my thought is, down the road, within two, three years, because of water quality, you're gonna see grants out there to buy equipment, if they pursue this. So, I don't see that us, why we start buying equipment, pay for ourselves, and when down the road, we can get grants and stuff.
So I had to testify last week in House, Senate Environmental, and salt came up while I was testifying. Because I was testifying on affairs, water quality stuff. And they indicated that salt levels in water, they made it sound like it's, of course, remember, Montpelier runs on bienniums. So we're in the first half of the biennium, so next year is the second half. They made it sound like it's gonna come up next session. So, um, what are the chances, was Hyde Park open to you guys going, because I know they're using it pretty extensively. Were they willing to have you come up and look at stuff?
They're more than willing for us to come up and look at their equipment.
Because I think that might be a good summer road trip too, just to take a day and go up and see what they're doing too.
Right.
Belden, are they doing open tanks, or are they doing like big polies?
Oh, no, it's all poly tanks.
Okay, I was just curious.
They, they got to build in the old Diamond National lumber company they bought
Okay.
Over the years.
Yeah.
And they got to actually, it turned out, having that building for them was perfect setup. Because they got two levels.
Yeah.
You got a level down here where they make the stuff, then a tank set up here, up on the higher level, about four feet up, roughly.
I guess my, my stance and what I would say, and sorry to take over, George, but
That's fine.
I guess what I would say is, we kinda got an inkling that this is coming, whether, I mean, in my opinion, I think it's coming down the pike, whether we like it or not.
Right.
So I think, we're in a phase right now, where like you're doing, I think the more education we can get, so we know
Right.
What we're facing, when it comes, at least we would have an idea of what, what is coming.
Right.
So, I mean, I, I wouldn't, myself, I know we're getting into spring, and we're gonna be getting into summer and all that. And theoretically, hopefully, snow season's behind us, theoretically. Yeah, that's right.
We're halfway through April.
Hopefully, hopefully, we're gonna, you know, be, have this season behind us. I think, if we can do some more education and learning over the summer, I think that would probably be a good thing.
Right.
Just, again, and maybe it doesn't come, but I'd rather be prepared based on the current, what I'm
And ready for it with figures and stuff like that.
Well, yeah, and also, by having some of that idea, if grants do open up, you're gonna know right what we can apply for.
Right.
Like what we're gonna need.
That's what I think. The other thing is, you know, the facility and stuff, we don't have, you know, the room to put them tanks of what we have.
Sure, right now, you don't have the ability to do that.
Right. Like you're thinking about future grants.
Well, it's like, we're talking about paving part of Middle Road from Adams Bridge to Chambers Bridge. And we put a grain in for that, and my, and then we wanna do Squires Road. Middle Road setup, I don't wanna get off topic here, but set up for state aid.
Yeah.
So I, I don't really wanna use our town taxpayers' money to do a state aid road.
If we're gonna get the money.
If we're gonna get the money, and do, you know,
Sure.
Do Squires Road instead. Or if we don't get the grant, we, if we get the grant, we can do both roads.
Yeah.
I'm just throwing that out there.
And like you said, if we don't, then we got a decision to make.
Right, and it's the same thing, you know, like for the stoplights and stuff. We bought, I'll tell you something, the, it was about eighteen thousand dollars, we paid for the stoplights. And they paid for themselves already, for setting them up with traffic coming and going.
All those stoplights, you were saying that some of them were, you were transporting them, and some of them got damaged a little bit, but how, what should be done?
Well, the only way we could transport them, because they got two heavy batteries in them, they're on a cart tank, but they're real heavy. We've been transporting in a payloader, which it can't secure, we tried to strap them, secure them as much as we can. But my, my thought right in the get-go, and I've mentioned this before, is to buy a enclosed trailer, whether it be like a horse trailer, or box trailer of some sort. To put the lights in to secure them. And that way there, if that trailer's big enough, they, a twelve or fourteen foot box trailer towed behind the truck. You can have your whole sign system, everything's in there, cones, signs and everything. And the benefit of that right there, come winter time, they're already in storage, undercover and stuff.
But going out to each job site, you already have them loaded.
Yeah, where now we have to offload and load, back and forth, like that.
But they're, they're doing the job that we got them for.
Oh my God, yes. And the other thing is, if you hire the flagging people, and all of a sudden, that day you have bad weather, you're still paying them.
Yeah.
And when you can't do that project for some reason, whether we have the snow or something, or we can't do it that day.
I, I kinda recall, we had a few times when people didn't show up and stuff. Yeah, that's what I thought.
On the, on the job site for flagging.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, you know, eliminates that whole delay. I don't know, I know, feel we've probably been through the stoplights when we were doing projects. Up by you, we did a project on Coal River Road, we had them stoplights set up. I don't know if you traveled through them at that time or not, but man, they're quite impressive.
Yeah, they worked out, over by that bridge really well.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and we felt more secure working on the road with them stoplights, because the traffic obeyed our lights.
Yeah, but can you, when you come up there, you just wait your, you know?
Wait your turn?
Change, change.
Yeah.
And you didn't have to wait for some guy with a sign or
Right, right.
No, it worked really great there at that bridge.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Cash, I didn't mean to get us off topic, Mr. Chairman.
Anything else under?
That's all I have, I guess.
All right, Jimmy?
Well, most of my questions were answered right there, in your conversations. I was out wondering about the brine and stuff, what they found out about that. Just a reminder that summer is coming, and what are we doing with our mower tractor, are we, is it ready to go, or are we gonna wait till two weeks after we need it?
Nope, we're gonna be working on that shortly, we got a brand new starter setting in the garage for it, ready to be installed. Other than that, we don't see any issues, but knock on wood, everything's fine with it.
I was gonna say, so as of fall, the valve bank had been fixed, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it was usable.
Okay.
Whether it's fixed, you know, right or whatever, but it made it function the way it's supposed to.
Anything else, Jim? Okay, approval of select board warrants?
They're right here.
They're out.
If anybody wants to come check them out, we'll, if we all sign them.
Yeah, we're, everybody's got it down here.
Put them right there then.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right. Guess, do you have any, anybody wanna? Yes?
Uh, I just wanted to come down and let the board know all that work that got done on the rails. On scenic view drive, the town did a great job, Cash and his guys.
Yeah.
Great job. More than happy on that. I do have a couple of concerns about a couple of things, like Baker's Distributing, you live over by there. They're running trucks there all night long, they don't shut them off, I can actually start smelling diesel fuel last night. Truck's running for like half hour, shuts off, keeps starting up. I've talked to several people, and the vice president of Baker's, he's from up in Burlington, and they said they were gonna address it. You know, people are trying to sleep around there, and it's like consistently like that all the time.
There's, there is a rumble there all night, more or less, you're right.
Yeah, I usually get in my truck, and I go right down there, and I'm like, hey, I don't wanna listen to this, you know.
Is it just the refrigeration unit running?
No.
Or is it the actual truck?
It's the actual truck, yeah.
Yeah, they had like two or three trucks, and they got reefers on them, and they sat there running all night long. And I talked to, um, a guy up in Burlington, and he goes, I called the plant manager down there, and I talked to him, and he's, it wasn't even worth my time calling down there. But it's echoing all the way up through there, I can probably get everybody in the neighborhood to sign something against that, but it's, it's just crazy.
What happens if we, as a select board, ask Kim to create a letter?
The letter?
Send?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we just, let's connect with Kim and have a, let's just send a town letter.
Take that first step, and, you know, from the town, so it's authentic or whatever, it may have some push.
See what, see what they say to us.
Yeah, I privately reached out to him, and one guy said he, the guy up in Burlington, I don't have his name offhand, but he's like, we're gonna address that. But even in the wintertime, if I have my cellphone, and I'm headed into Rutland, I do plowing for business, I own my own business, and I call Cash, I'm like, there's these trucks off the road, they shouldn't even be driving up there in the middle of a snowstorm, and they block North Shoesbury Road all the time.
Yeah.
You know, they don't actually unload them trucks till like six thirty, seven o'clock in the morning.
Right, they'll sit there and wait.
But they sit there, last night it was about eight, nine o'clock, and I could hear the truck running constantly. He must hear it, because it's almost across the road from your house.
Yeah, my windows open usually, so I hear it.
Yeah.
Do you have contact information that you could?
I can get the information and get it to you, or email, or text it to Cash or something. I have his number, probably mostly your numbers anyway, but.
Yeah, this chairman, there's something I add to that, I've been after Baker Distributing for the last four years, to put a sign of their entrance.
Yeah.
Because what they do is, they come up that hill, and a lot of you guys like from Georgia and Florida, the summertimes on tractor trailers.
Yeah.
And what happened is, they get up that hill, and Carrera's got a driveway before the rail tracks. There's many times they pulled into there.
They're missing, they don't go far enough.
They're going to the wrong one.
Go far enough, they gotta go with the rail tracks.
So maybe we can address two things, sign and jam the trucks.
That's what I'm hoping, because when they get in that driveway, they realize they're wrong, they back up, and they end up with a reefer in the ditch.
Yeah.
Many times, over and over.
Okay.
I, I had something else I wanted to talk about, you know, you guys are talking about the brine. I've heard, I've watched a couple of the meetings and heard this and that about it. It's over two hundred thousand dollars to even do that, to begin with, and Belden does it, he does it at GE, at the hospital. You don't see them, you don't see many towns doing it on the roads, not very, very often. I think that it's like, I think the town, like, not unless you get a grant, it's way too much money for the town to be even involved in.
Which is why we're gonna look into the cost of it.
Well, I've been plowing driveways and roads for thirty years. And I know, I know both of them guys, the building guys that own the business, and it's very costly to even do that.
Right.
You have to pretty much have a heated building, you don't have the facility here to even do it.
There's only one bay down there that's got heat in it, and
That's our work bay.
Yeah, that's where the mechanic garage is, so to speak.
Well, I, I was kinda concerned, because the last few snowstorms we've had, see a lot of sand on the road, on tar. Usually you use salt on tar, not sand, but people only do what they're supposed to do here. You know, in the summertime, you come riding a motorcycle, I have a nice Harley, I don't wanna be driving down the road and go off the road, because the town has to use sand on tar roads. I don't see Rutland City using sand on their roads.
You know the reason though, don't you? Reason for salt versus sand, you have your own, town has its own sewage system. Then they, all the sand that goes through the drains and everything, they have to process that, cost of money to process that sand. So salt just flows right through, right into the creek.
It all packs up.
Where we don't have a, you know, a sewage system in town of Clarendon, so, sand's a lot cheaper. What we spend seventeen thousand dollars on sand versus a hundred and five on salt. You're, you've got a bigger, bigger wallet for taxes than me, I guess.
Well, just like, if you drive down the road, and you got a nice vehicle, you get your truck all dinged up, some of the salt and sand here, they got all kinds of rocks and everything in it, so.
Well, anyways, thank you for bringing that to our concern.
Yeah, and, uh, let's see, I, I wanna, can I interrupt you again, Mr. Chair? Can you tell us who you are, sir?
Sure, uh, how's it going, guys? My name is Denny Miller.
Okay, we have, we have a spot here, just a few minutes.
Sure, um, so I grew up, I grew up in Killington, uh, my parents, my parents are very involved in the town or world when I was growing up. So I have some secondhand experience, my dad was a selectman, mom was on the school board, so, um, let's see. Joined the army back in twenty-eleven, and did one tour, came back and ended school, went to college at Susquehanna University down in Pennsylvania. Did my, uh, what was it, the, uh, the associate, did my associate's degree, sorry, bachelor's degree. Got my, uh, let's see, so bachelor's of business administration with a emphasis in finance. Then moved back up here, bought a house in Clarendon in twenty-nineteen, and, yeah, just feel like I should get back to the community. So, I heard there's a position open, and thought that it might be an interesting new adventure, so.
Well, thank you for that intro, and we'll be to that in just a couple of minutes, so thank you, thanks for the intro.
Sure, my pleasure.
We're getting close. All right, no guests, any more public comments? Go ahead, John.
You called me about the beaver situation up there in Chicken Hawk?
Yeah.
And just wanted to tell you they're alive and well. They've got a pretty good dam, just right above the bridge.
On the north side?
North side?
On the south side.
South side, yeah.
Upstream.
Upstream side.
And then, like behind the schoolhouse on the other side of the bridge, that, that's where they have dinner, I think. They just, a whole clearing of trees is down.
Yeah.
Can we contact the gentleman that we had last fall? You been in contact with him?
Yes, I have already.
Okay, good, because he kinda
Well, I guess, the beaver dam got taken out, I don't know by who, and he had actually pulled his traps.
Okay.
And he has spent a lot of time there, and he's at the point now that if this keeps going on, he's gonna charge the town for the hour instead of per beaver.
You called him too, didn't you, John?
I, I talked to him just the other day, he said he was gonna come to this meeting, actually, but
He didn't come.
Yeah, no, he, he, he told me not to take, pull the dam out at all, because he, he clears a section, and that's where he puts his trap, and then they come back.
It disturbs them.
But he's told me several times, he's, he's gonna come up there and do something, and, and he hasn't, so.
Let's follow up.
He's actually had four, four sets there.
Four sets of traps?
Oh, yeah, traps, he actually had to pull them, because the beaver dam got pulled out by hand or something. And I don't know.
Did he get the beavers?
No, because they didn't allow him enough time.
Got C four?
Okay.
I, about a week ago, I was down there, and I just had a ten-minute staring match with the beaver. That healthy beaver just sitting on the bank.
Yeah.
Just looking at me, so, I know they're, they're there.
Oh, they're there.
So I guess we need just to have a follow-up conversation?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I actually talked to him, it was today, Monday, Friday it was.
Okay.
Let's get back in touch with him, we gotta say we got, you know, a real issue.
Yeah.
We'd like him to come.
Definitely.
Okay.
Come in.
That's Kim, Kim Reed.
I think that the, pretty much the majority of select boards is in favor of getting him back in there and
Yep.
Yep, sounds good. Can remind him of the vault.
He, did he come down to see you about that, that time?
No.
He didn't?
No, since he called to give you All right, well.
Let's follow up.
Yep.
All right, John, we got on that.
Mr. Chairman, we'll need to skip Mr. Knapp, he has not joined us, so I'll keep you posted if he gets on or not.
All right, so let's go down, Shelley Lutz, do you have anything?
Talk about the website.
Okay.
You guys all got a copy of this?
We just did, when we got here tonight, so.
So, Town, Town Minutes and Agenda, you have to get on the homepage, and then to find it, you have to know to scroll all the way down to the bottom of the page. However, in that little dropdown that I had circled in red, I think the Town Minutes and Agenda need to be in that dropdown. So when you go to, living in Clarendon, Vermont, you can find the minutes in the Agenda. You don't, because if you click on something, say you click on Bailey Memorial Library, scroll to the bottom of the page, the minutes, and those four or five tabs that are at the bottom of the page all disappear, and you can't get back to it, so. I know websites can be time-consuming to do upkeep on, but I just think that more people might find the Agenda and the Minutes and meeting calendar, if it was in that dropdown.
Hi, do you have a copy of this? So when, and then, when Gloria gets back here, let's have a little sit-down with her.
Um, I think Kim has already, since communicating with Shelley
Okay.
Has already sat down, and Gloria and her have brainstormed on how they can accomplish those things. So I think it's just a matter of
Doing it.
Them working with Got2Web to have those website build changes made.
Is that something that Gloria's gonna be able to do, she does the input?
No, he would add the buttons and add the, yeah.
I was just looking for the Agenda, and I couldn't find it, so now I know where to look for it.
Just, you know what I found the easiest thing to do? Google Clarendon, Vermont Agenda, Vermont, and that's how I get to it, as opposed to going on the webpage.
On the site.
Yeah, on the site, it was, uh
Shortcut.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Shelley.
Yeah.
All right, all right. Town appointment for representative to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Board of Commissioners. And Bronson has indicated that he'd be, he would agree to be reappointed.
I move that we appoint Bronson Spencer to the Rutland Regional Planning Commission.
They're second for discussion?
I'll second that.
All right, is there any discussion? Yes?
Am I allowed to speak? Um, the planning commission actually nominated, um, oh God, what's her name, Sarah Crumb, to that seat.
Instead of Bronson, or with Bronson, it's instead, so we never got word.
She hasn't come to you yet, okay.
Well, I could withdraw the motion, we can wait till we hear from it, I guess. And table it to next meeting, is what we're thinking?
I mean
I, it's up to you guys, but.
Puts us in an interesting spot, cause Bronson's been on for years now. We asked him if he wanted to continue and he's indicated yes, so.
That was my concern.
Up to you guys.
Well, part of, part of the problem with that is Bronson wasn't at the meeting, at the beginning of that meeting the other night, when, when this took place.
Yeah.
I don't know if he was made privy of all that, that he's kinda out and she's kinda in. Um, I don't know if he was aware of that or not, so that's how that went at the, at the planning commission meeting.
So, he's not aware of the fact that somebody else might be interested? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so, I think that we should have a conversation with both of them.
I mean, there is, there is a spot for two people on that, of, of, of.
There's an alternate.
There's, there's an alternate.
There's an alternate.
Well, in that case, then, does the board want to appoint both folks and let them sit down and
see who's gonna be the chair?
Yeah.
See who's gonna be the prime and then the alternate.
Right.
Well, so George.
Or talk to both of them.
Based on your, um, are you gonna withdraw your motion, then we table this till next meeting?
That's, well, that was my first suggestion, but, uh, after hearing the concern that you folks expressed about him being on for so long, it kinda seems reasonable that we do that. I think, uh, I withdraw it and we table it to the next meeting. Or, I mean, I think we could appoint them both tonight, but if, you know, that might, I, I, I don't think it's the right.
No, we should do it both eyeball, eyeball.
Yeah, I think so.
So.
I'll withdraw it.
All right, are you?
So I'll make the motion to table then.
Okay.
Second.
So, the process is going to be that we'll have, uh, add this to the agenda for the next meeting and we'll. Pardon?
Cash, cash or George second to hit one of them?
Cash it.
And then we can, uh,
You can have it, George.
We can contact both of them and let them know what's going on, and then
Yep.
Have that conversation and let them know that we're going to make a decision at our next meeting.
Yep.
Is that okay?
That sounds fine to me.
Sounds good to me.
Yep.
Um, did you call the motion?
You gotta call the motion.
Uh. Yeah, you gotta.
Yeah.
You gotta vote on it.
All right, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that's what we're gonna do. I keep talking and I forget what the hell I'm doing.
Well, I have the same problem. I'm getting old. What's your name again?
I got, I got it written down in my wallet.
Well, that's a good thing.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, in the interest of time, I'll make the motion. This is a yearly task for us to, uh, certify the highway mileage, which I see came from Brian Sanderson. I assume it's an order cash, so I'll make a motion that the board, cause we do all have to sign it, so I'll make a motion that the board signs that.
Second.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Pass that along, throw a date on there for me, Rob, if you would.
Oh, today's what, the fourteen?
All right, recommendation to the school board for open seats. I think.
We have, we have three at this point.
I was gonna say, do we have two?
We have three.
Three.
Well, you have three. The school board only has two.
But I'm talking about open seats.
I'm Carol. Hi, Denny.
Hi, Carol.
Um, Denny has not, um, as far as I know, um, submitted a letter to the school board, so.
I was out in Colorado.
So, but do we have two seats or one?
We have two seats and we have, the school board has received two letters, two applicants.
Okay. Did our office pass this along to you?
I, yeah, so I, I called Denny three times, I believe. He did call me back. Um, I texted him my email. I emailed you twice about submitting a letter and the process. And.
My sister-in-law is very pregnant, so I was doing family tasks, so.
Right, right. I'm just, I'm just saying that's the process and two, two applicants have followed the whole process.
So, at this point.
I do wanna apologize. We did receive that, um, that letter of interest a few weeks ago, and with everything going on in this office and with folks being out of this office, I did not forward that to the school board, so I want to apologize for that miscommunication with that, um. Yeah, so Heidi, it's the applicant's responsibility to send it to the school board. I did get, I did get his letter. And I did ask him to follow that up and and he did it.
Any other folks did get a letter as well? So that'd be.
I guess I didn't understand that it had to go specifically to the school board and that it couldn't go to the, the select board to make a recommendation. And that's fine, um, but what I'm saying is that once I got the letter, I let Denny know. Yep. Twice.
So is that in statute? Or is that a Mill River rule?
I, that's just the process, yeah. That's the, that's the rule.
So, so we can look it up to confirm it? It's in statute that it has to go to the school board?
I'm not sure on that.
I actually have it, but it'd take me a few minutes to find it.
That's what I'm saying.
To be fair, if I may, I mean, all you guys can issue an exception or whatever, this is the edict. However, I would like to remind you that I was on a, a, uh, family vacation, family trip to take care of my sister-in-law. My brother was working, cause she was giving birth in about a week. I was not anywhere near a computer. I had no ability to write this letter. I was not made aware of it when I initially put my letter of interest in. So, be that as it may, if this is a disqualifying event, then that's, that is what it is, but.
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna give motion. We table this till we get more information about this.
Um, I would prefer that you not table it.
It does sound like that.
We, um, you know, I mean, you make your recommendation. The school board
Is the one who points.
Is the one who decides, um, and I know somewhere I have the actual, here we go. I have to find it. You know how hard that is for me to remember when, but, um, Denny, I spoke to Denny on, um, let me see here. See, now I wish I didn't have a, have a computer. Okay.
Do you have a lot of using Wi-Fi on?
When is your next meeting, Carol, that you're gonna be?
Uh, Wednesday. So I talked to Denny on March thirtieth. And I got his email address. I sent him my email address. I texted him twice or emailed him twice. Um, and he told me on the conversation we had on March thirtieth, that he was gonna be back in Vermont on the following Tuesday, which would have been whatever, April second or something, and that he would get me that letter. Um, I didn't hear from him. I followed up with another email reminding him and inviting him to the last meeting on April second to come and meet the board and.
The school board.
So, I mean, the other two applicants were able to follow the process in a timely manner, and I think the board, the school board is ready to move on this. We have two empty Clarendon seats on that board right now, and.
Well, my, my concern is, yes, even though the responsibility is on the applicant, there is a small measure of responsibility, I guess, on the town side at this point, but. I, I personally, I, I think that if a couple of folks have followed procedure.
Yep.
Then we should move forward with this. Uh, because it's important to our town to have representation.
Yes.
Uh, at the school board. And so I think it's important for us just to consider the, the letters and make recommendations as of tonight.
If I were to submit a letter by this evening, would that satiate the desire?
I mean, you can recommend three people.
Yes, we can, and you, you get to make the decision.
If you, if you guys wanna recommend three people, I'm just.
Well, that's, that's kind of my inclination.
Base it on how you wanna base it, you know?
The other option, the other option we can do is, um, recess for five or ten minutes, and we have all the statutes at our fingertips.
We could do that.
And let's see what the statute says. If we wanted to do that.
Let's do that. I like that. It's a good idea.
Mr. Parliament, Mr. Parliamentarian will have you.
Is that a motion or are you?
So do I withdraw that motion I had to table them? Yes.
Yeah. Yep.
And, and I will make the motion that we recess for however long it takes to find out what the rules are, the statutes are.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Everybody take a break.
Um, so I know we recessed to check the statute and just wanted to, for the record, state what that is. Um, sixteen VSA seven thirty-one A, um, and there's a few sections below this, but the one that applies to this situation, uh, says notwithstanding any other provision of law, to the contrary, this section shall apply to a vacancy on a unified union school district board, which is us, um, unless otherwise provided in the Articles of Agreement, uh, as, um, presented before the bo- voters. And it says that filling the vacancy, I gotta get down to the right section here, just one second. That. Lost my section, just one second, sorry. That the district shall notify the select board, which has happened, um, that there is a vacancy and that within thirty days that it has to be appointed, um, and that the, um, in the, interested party has to apply. It does not say where to, so that's the question we had. Does it specify where the application has to go, but they, that they shall apply for the vacancy and, um, at that point, the recommendation gets made and the board fills it within thirty days. So, um, the long and the short of it is that, um, an application has to be made, which I would stay based on the black and white, we have three applications before us.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, based on the interest in the parties and based on the order that they came in, I would make a motion that we recommend Rich Clark and Denny Miller to the Unified School Board District of Mill River.
We have Dave Potter as well that we can recommend, cause he's fulfilled.
My mo- my motion is for two at this time.
I'll second that motion. All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yeah, I'll throw in a name.
All right, so the motion carries, that's okay.
Yep.
So we can notify uh, Dave, because it sounds like he did not get.
Yep.
All right. Then I guess you've got it.
Okay. Done your thing.
And I, I presume you're gonna have a letter here to take with you.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yeah, we'll be done in a few minutes.
Okay.
The majority passed that.
Yes.
Good.
I, um, I know you've passed it. I just wanna make, um, one statement. And it says the application needs to be made to the board.
It doesn't say to the board, it just says that they shall apply.
Okay, but the deci- but the, the, um, board that is deciding is the school board, so it makes sense that it's supposed to be input from the school board or from the select board.
Yes.
Yeah, and that's what we're, we are recommending. It's not saying that all three can't put their paperwork in.
Right.
In my opinion.
That's what I'm trying to.
We are recommending two people out of the three.
Gotcha. But the school board has, or the, um, school board members have received the other two and not this one. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I, we do, I do see that, yeah.
I, you know, I, I'll, I'll check, you know, with the superintendent and with the V S B A, but whether we can consider all three, even though you guys have, um, given input on two.
According to what?
Yes, you certainly can, I guess.
That if three people submit, the town can agree with all three or recommend.
Recommend just two, yeah, which you've done.
And that's what we just did.
That's what you did, yes.
And, but if the other letter was also submitted to the school board like it's supposed to be, then the school board winds up saying yea or nay to all three or two of those three, it's out of our hands. That's the way it sounds to me.
Yeah, that's kind of how it is figured out. See, I was there when this was, came up in the Articles of Agreement that we originally put out. And I think the conclusions at that time in my mind was murky, and I'm not sure that it's clear at this point either, from the standpoint of the school's position with their articles. It's, they have articles there, I don't know, have a copy of it anymore. Do you have a copy of it?
Um, yeah, we have a copy of the Articles of Agreement, the bylaws and everything, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I'm talking about, and, and the way it was written in there the last time I looked at it.
Well, we, we, cause we were one of the first towns, if you remember, that came up with a vacancy.
That was mine.
It was yours, and I test, I know I was one of the ones that testified at the State House.
Yeah.
On it.
Yeah.
Uh, at the time, this was back during COVID.
That's right.
Because they discovered a huge hole in the law.
Yeah.
That was a problem, and this statute is the answer to that problem, but that's not. Like you said, it's still got, it's still got some issues.
So, yep, yep. So anyways.
Hey.
Do you have copies of all three now, once he's?
I don't have, I only have two.
When, when he prints his, then.
Well, okay, but I gotta get it to the other members. I'm not gonna hand copy it.
We could do the old classic email. Those signals won't work, you know?
Well, can we make copies of that?
Well, he, if he can email it to me, even if you can email it to me, I guess, then I can email it to the other members.
Okay, we can, we can get that. Let's continue on, ladies and gentlemen, and YouTube.
Thank you for your time.
Oh, you know me well.
I do.
Okay. All right, Comcast to work with Vermont Community Broadband.
Oh, this one, yeah.
So, you wanna speak to that, Rob?
Well, I see the letter here. I just was trying to understand what it's all about, so. Um, so it's a, based on my reading, it's a request from Comcast that the town support uh, them in a grant.
Application.
Application, which this is just a letter of support of their grant application for a grant that will expand broadband access. And Clarendon could be one of the benef- beneficiaries, recipients of the fact that we apply.
Well, we do have some dead spots in town. I don't care what anybody says. I know going up Walker Mountain, there's quite a few spots there. Well, you might have it right near your house.
Well, we have like one bar.
So there is a letter here that's been drafted, um, and it just simply states that the board is supporting, uh, the project and supporting this grant application, and I'll go ahead and make a motion that we authorize, uh, Mike Klopchen and George as the clerk to sign that.
I can't second it.
No.
I'll second it.
Okay. Has it been a motion made seconding? Is there any further discussion? Comments? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Done. Let me sign this real quick.
Got it.
We have power. Yeah, let's go.
Hallelujah.
There you go. We'll put that in here.
Yeah, for Kim.
I'm putting all this stuff in that envelope.
My God, you're a good man. I don't care about everybody.
I don't listen to anybody. Let's see, Old Business Greenup Dumpster Location Discussion.
I thought we were done with that. Do we got further follow-up or?
I wasn't here to ask meeting. Don't know what was discussed, but my recommendation, we've also had it down to the town garage. And we come back Monday morning, Greenup's on a Saturday, we come back Monday morning or a week before that. There's so much garage clean outs.
stuffed in there, not in green up bags, and tires, and Mike can verify the tires. I mean, this, we're talking up to hundred, about a hundred and thirty tires.
Yeah.
And my, my suggestion is, and I've left Dr. Horace, and that might be why he was here tonight, is to have the dumpster at the transfer station so that people bring it to the transfer station. And I don't wanna throw more work on horse and the crew over there, but they can kind of guide.
Manage it.
Manage it somewhat.
Where about you're gonna put it?
I, where you pack your truck? What a close buy.
That'll work.
Yeah.
What was that?
No, somewhere's, you know.
Is the ground solid enough there in that little area of grass if you come in?
I wouldn't put it on the lawn right there, but in that section, somewhere there, we can figure out something. But I, I just like, we spend, I don't know what Hubbard's charged, I can't remember, but say three, four bucks a tire, and all of a sudden there's a hundred and thirty tires there.
Yup.
That show up. And you know, it looks like they all come from the same few places.
They're not all covered in mud, right?
So the only thing that we brought up at the last meeting, just so you, cause I know you, like you said.
Yup, fill me in.
Was we gotta empower the guys to make sure that not everybody pulling in that day is throwing their household trash in there. So that's gonna be the.
How are they gonna do that? It's, they have green bags, you know?
Well, the green bag's going to dumpster.
I was gonna say, anything green bagged can go in, but some people use personal bags out there bagging up too, so that's an, that's gonna be a.
That's gonna be an issue, yeah.
Is that a judgment calling to?
I think, I think we gotta let them use your judgment on if, if it's roadside trash or if they got a truckload of household trash.
My suggestion is to open up the big back door so they're not heaving it over, over the dumpster.
Yup.
And clobber themselves with it.
Sure. How many, how many residents, I mean, versus what you do, like what the town, when it gets piled up and you get picked up?
Our, our biggest culprit is Shelley.
Yeah, I've noticed a lot that are a mess. Yeah, there's a lot of trash.
I already took a picture and sent that to Dave. You notice it's still there.
Yeah.
We got a sink down in the Rollin Town and.
So, but we got, I just know a lot up on Gorge Road too. Um, so basically you're haul, you haul to the dumpster is what you're saying?
No.
Oh, you pu- you pile it and they pick it up? Okay.
And ta- sends me a picture.
Okay.
So I know what truck to send up.
But I make piles. I don't make them pick up individual bags. I make a couple of piles.
Sure.
Now, what's the hour? Very handy.
That's gonna be.
Saturday until one.
Right, but what, green up day is?
First Saturday in May.
Second. That's gonna be a, a problem, you know?
Yeah, because uh, if you're closing at one o'clock, people, when it's down here, or when the dumpster used to be beside the building, it was twenty-four hours they could.
Right.
Be dumping into there. But if you guys are closing at one o'clock. Now, my question then to the select board is, are we going to consider, this is just for discussion at this point, having one or two members stay there beyond one o'clock?
For what members are you talking about?
For green up day. For, for uh.
He's saying man the transfer station longer that day.
Right.
Cause otherwise, I think you guys are gonna come in on Wednesday and find a bunch of green bags by the gate.
Right in the gate.
That's right.
How, how late do you honestly think we would need to be open is the question?
Four.
Four?
I would think that reasonable.
But if it, if they do it twenty-four hours a day, it was better down here, actually, you know? That way they come and dump it anytime.
We, I mean, we can do anything you want to do. I'm just throwing that out there. I'm looking at, I'm looking at the revenue side of, side of it. What it costs us extra with this not being manned at all on the weekends or after night, after hours when we're not there.
So it looks like the choice is be prepared to pay some extra money because people are gonna use it to put in their garage clean out. Or at the transfer station, we may end up with a lot of household trash in there that doesn't belong, which will cost us extra, so.
Sure.
My main thing is tires.
Tires are the problem.
They're expensive to get rid of.
Or do you think we could finagle it, Horace, two man it till four that day? Run two shifts or something?
Yeah, oh no, I think probably be able to do it, yeah. But now, there, I, you mentioned last year it wa- you had like a hundred and fifty tires and.
Which those need to be piled next to it, right?
Now, what are we gonna do?
Either a hundred and thirty.
Has a hundred and thirty.
What are we gonna do if we get bombarded with stuff like that too?
But that still has to be taken care of. The town still has its
Yup.
Responsibility because we're calling it green up day.
Right.
Uh, I don't know that an attendant can stand there and say.
If you drive around the roadside, you don't see a lot of tires.
Right.
It's people who are, oh, these winter tires are wore out. I'm gonna ditch them. I'm cleaning out the garage.
That's what I'm afraid is happening.
That's what's going on.
We've already picked up and taken stuff to off the mountain here, three TVs and.
I saw that, yeah.
That was over there that was in.
I end up with couches, beds.
Mm-hmm.
Lazy boys. And everything that up to the house, I burn them. They bring them on my.
Didn't hear you say that.
Well, I didn't hear a word.
The other option could be that if it's just for a twenty-four hour period, just put the dumpster in front of the sand pile here.
Yeah, right.
Where it used to be.
You mean here?
Yeah.
What's, what are the chances that, cause I think part of our issue is it's been here a longer period of time. So what's, what if we did shorten up how long we had it? Would it help?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm, of course, I realize Casella's probably delivering to every town in the area for that time period. I just wonder how quick we could get it in and get it out.
Does it make sense? If you're having it at the transfer station, you're gonna pay someone to go there and stand there and watch people.
Right.
Or does it make sense maybe just to take in the tires and offset the cost of one, you know what I mean? You know, you know what I'm saying? Instead of paying someone, you'd be like, oh, you can't put that in there, or, or nobody comes around for the last hour, say. Does it, will that offset the cost of fifty tires?
It's certainly been a number of years since it's been up here.
Could put it up here after the side.
I mean, it's been a number of years since we've done that.
But if you did put it up here, then you just have a big sign that says green up day dumpster.
And smile, you're on candid camera.
There you go.
There you go.
Sounds like a plan.
So we got a solution?
Right, and I like Donnie's suggestion of, yeah, paying them, offsetting what's gone cost us. And with it being more exposed by the road.
Yeah.
People are less apt. It's, it's like, you know, drive down on Alphrich Road, the bridge, dump all the crap down here.
Yup. Or down on South Creek Road.
South Creek Road.
Yeah.
So you understand that.
I'm gonna be afraid that once at four o'clock we close up, they're gonna put stuff at the gate in front there.
Well, that's, that's why we're saying, we're, we're changing, we're saying put it down here. Yeah.
Invite the bullet. We get those extra tires, it'll off, like Donnie said, it'll offset your pay.
Sure.
But you won't have somebody abusing it as bad if it was down there.
Correct.
Yup.
Correct. Because it's up here in front of the.
Yeah.
And we'll get a.
Let's give it a shot.
We'll get the camera up.
You remember that Bob, when we used to have it up here, the dumpster?
Yup.
Green up there.
So I'll make a motion that we officially designate next to the town hall for the green up dumpster.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? And all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
And we got an extra item there.
Excuse, I'm so sorry. I do, I don't find it be, I do need to. So I finished this letter real quickly. Um, I'd be happy to read it to you guys, so you have a firsthand experience with what I tried to put down. But if not, then, yeah, square away.
Go ahead, read, unless it's a three-page letter.
No, I managed to put together a lengthy paragraph.
Okay.
Go to it.
All right, let's see what we got here. To whoever may concern, hello, I'm a retired army veteran living in Clarendon. I apologize in advance to the rushed nature of this letter, but I hope it will help give a glimpse into my personality and intentions. I grew up in Killington and went to high school in Woodstock. My parents served our town, uh, one is se- selectmen and the other on the school board, so I have some secondhand perspective on what to expect. I served on active duty military during the war on terror as a combat engineer and served as a unit armor. This position was a, um, in this position I was assigned is responsible for over four million dollars worth of weapons, optics, and firearm parts. This is my first experience with Excel and it was a true trial by fire. After my nearly four years uh, of active duty, I ended my military career in the reserves concluding in twenty eighteen. After my active service, I went to college at Saskatchewan University, where I received a bachelor's degree in business administration. Since leaving the military, I have been overwhelmed with free time, which I have been filling with outdoor activities and day trading and further education. I've been working part-time as the assistant tennis pro of Vermont Sport and Fitness, where I get to interact with all sorts of interesting people and that has given me the urge to give back to the community. Scroll down. When I heard of this seat vacancy, I saw this as an opportunity to help the town that has welcomed me with such open arms. As a thirty-three-year-old educated combat veteran, I feel that I would bring a good energy to the board. I'm patient, polite, and enjoy finding solutions that allow everybody to win. Again, I apologize to the rushed nature of this letter, but greatly appreciate your time and hope I can be of use. Cheers and many thanks for your service to our community. Danny Miller.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My pleasure. So. I'll be done with you guys and uh, I have a match actually I gotta get to. So. Perfect, thank you so.
Carry on, soldier.
Thank you.
Or as they say, semperify.
Ah, well, I'm an army guy, so. But I respect it.
George, you had something else?
Yeah, I just let him.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Good night, Danny.
Okay, the last item that I had on, on the uh, transfer station is apparently we're getting a lot of cash payments at the dumpster station that uh, sort of uh, is contrary to the notion of it being an emergency. What do you think, uh, Horace? Do you think that that's emergency every time or?
Well, I think the problem is people come in still with the tickets, the red, uh, the red ones. And they have their trash and they don't have enough punches. So, you know, so then I give them a ticket, but then they have money, so we take the money and then I can punch their new ticket.
Are you thinking after this transition it'll?
Oh, it's gonna be a lot better.
You think it will?
Yeah.
Cause I, I mean, I for one, I know we stated that that was only gonna be on an emergency basis, so I'd like to make sure we get there.
Yeah. I mean, if you don't mind, I, I just let them go then and.
Well, no, I'm not saying let them go.
Lose money.
I'm not saying let them go. I'm saying, I'm just hoping that after this transition's over, I wanna make sure it's gonna get better.
Right, yeah.
If it continues on, maybe I'll look at a credit card machine of some sort and possibly.
That would be perfect.
Well, we'll have to have a discussion.
Yup.
I don't know the expense or anything.
So do you wanna put a time limit on how long we wanna let the current situation continue or how do you wanna? Now. Because who knows how long it's gonna take people to use those old cards up and.
Well, theoretically, it should take pretty short period of time, but.
Take too long.
Yeah.
Might have a few people.
Cause we've been punching, well, you know, a lot, you know, on them.
I would like just to make one comment. I, I did notice that there are a couple of things though, that have come up multiple times on the sheets that you guys are filling out for us. Paying cash the same person a couple of weeks in a row, those kinds of a thing. Um, first of all, I do wanna thank you very, very much, you guys, for filling out those sheets, because our auditors will be very happy to see that.
They look much better now that you're taping them.
It's wonderful, yes. So, um, but just one thing to note, that there are a few um, that have consistently now come up weekly paying cash, at least for a couple of weeks in a row. Um, so just keep watch of that, so that if, uh, maybe a quick glance on the sheet that you guys have in front of you, um, to make sure that this isn't someone who's gonna become a repeat offender, that's all.
Yeah, who's abusing, obviously abusing the situation.
But we don't put their names down. Yes, you do.
For cash?
Yeah. I have the sheets.
Yeah.
Yeah. And you should.
Yeah, I guess. I've been doing it wrong then.
Well, the other guys are covering for you.
David's got you covered.
Yeah.
There you go. David's got you covered.
Dave's got you, yeah.
All right, so where are we gonna leave this?
So I guess what I would say is let's, let's loop back to this first meeting in May and see where we're at. Let's see if it's gotten better.
Okay.
Somebody mentioned credit cards though. It's like a four percent charge.
There's a big charge for that. There can be, yeah, depending on the vendor, yeah.
Okay, I'm done.
Do you have any, anything else, Horace, that you wanna bring up?
No, that should do.
Well, he may be staying for. Are you, are you coming for executive session?
Executive session?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I mean, I wanted.
Oh, yeah, 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 good idea.
All right, then uh.
Is this mine or yours?
That's mine.
Mine's hiding over here.
That I think.
Um, if there's nothing else, I entertain a motion and go into executive session.
That we gotta do.
I don't wanna.
Sorry, I should've let the parliamentarian speak up.
I was gonna say. You jumped right in, so I was gonna let you.
Kevin, do you have anything?
No, I'm awesome.
Heidi?
I'm awesome.
Horace, anything else?
Nope, I think we're.
Should be everybody.
Hmm?
Okay.
Now I entertain a motion.
Well, you gotta do our concerns next.
What about our concerns?
I'm not gonna do it until we come out of executive session.
You can't, they're doing it.
It's on the agenda first.
Cash, do you have any concerns?
I wasn't here the last meeting. I wanna welcome Don Pratt to our select board.
That's very good. Anything else?
I'm all set. Oh, I've got four or five things.
As usual.
Pass.
Pass.
Um, just wanted to ask, cause I know last spring, and I should've done this under highway, but it just came to me. Last spring, there was a shortage on Sherp, on uh, not Sherpak, but Cold Patch. Is there gonna be any issues you think getting it this spring?
No, but what we found out is actually, being the cold weather, we've been actually, and it's expensive, and buy it in the bags. Once you put it down, it stays.
Okay.
Unless we're doing multi.
A big area, okay. I just was curious. I didn't, cause I, seems as though last year this, we were talking about a shortage. So that's why I was gonna ask.
Yeah.
No, I don't have anything else.
Donnie?[1701.44]